Okay, it is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Kayler.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to read a quote from astronomer and author Carl Sagan. He said, "It pays to keep an open mind, but not so open your brains fall out."
Okay. That's a good Halloween one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Snay.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
And Councilmember Herniman.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show all seven members of council present this evening. Minutes from August 19th, 2024, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any questions, corrections, or deletions on those? They will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
The Finance Committee meeting was held Monday, August 26th, 2024, in council chambers. Purpose of the meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 24-38 and 2441, any other business that comes before them. Attending were committee members Kevin Reesner and John Kayler, among others. Chief Chapel presented proposals to updates for 143.05, the rates for ambulance service. Following discussion, Kayler motioned to have the law director prepare legislation for 24-38, seconded by Reesner, and the motion carried unanimously. Finance Director Kaufman proposed credit card limit changes as they are frequently maxed out. Following discussion, it was proposed the company aggregate credit card limit was to be increased to $100,000. Mayor and department heads to be increased to $5,000. Police and fire rescue to have a credit card limit of $10,000. Kayler motioned to have the law director prepare legislation for 2441, seconded by Reesner, and the motion carried unanimously. No further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:52.
Thank you. Any questions on that committee report? All right, Law and Community Planning, Councilmember Kayler.
Thank you, Madam President. The Law and Community Planning Committee met in city chambers on August 26th, 2024, starting at 5:59 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the T-Mac Wing Project, as well as any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members John Kayler, John Hayes, and Dennis Snay. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, Councilmember Scott Herniman, Councilmember Cheyenne Thacker, Councilmember Kevin Reesner, Ryan Punyon, and from the public, Brian Young. Councilmember Kayler started the meeting by addressing the Tiffin Municipal Arts Committee, T-Mac Wing Project. The Wing Project would see the construction and placement of various wing-themed sculptures throughout the city of Tiffin. The sculptures would be designed by local artists. T-Mac had previously addressed both this committee and city council regarding the project. Recently, T-Mac addressed city council again, with changes having been made to the project. After the proposed changes, the project would now consist of just two wing-themed sculptures. One would be placed at Hedges Boyer Park and the other on Frost Parkway Avenue. Each of the sculptures would be accompanied by a plaque with an uplifting inscription and a QR code that would direct the reader to the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Seneca County. The sculptures were designed by local artists and would be constructed by a local fabricator, B.A.M. Signs. The cost for the fabrication would be $11,000. The signage would be prepared by M.L.A.D. signage at an additional cost that would be covered by the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Seneca County. T-Mac, through Representative Ryan Punyon, has asked the committee to recommend that the project be authorized and that city council authorize the disbursement of $11,000 from the Tiffin Community Foundation's Tiffin Recreation and Beautification Endowment Fund, commonly called the Squirrel Fund. After a discussion, Councilmember Dennis Snay moved to recommend that the city law director draft legislation to request that the Tiffin Community Foundation disburse $11,000 for the proposed Wing Project. Councilmember John Hayes seconded the motion. The motion passed three to zero. Councilmember John Hayes then moved to amend the motion to declare an emergency. Councilmember Dennis Snay seconded the motion. The motion to amend the motion to declare an emergency passed three to zero. Councilmember Kayler then moved to recommend that the city law director draft legislation to have city council authorize the T-Mac Wing Project, authorize the installation of wing sculptures at the Hedges Boyer Park and Frost Parkway locations, and authorize the city administrator to take any and all action necessary to facilitate the project. Councilmember John Hayes seconded the motion. The motion passed three to zero. Councilmember Kayler then moved to amend the motion to declare an emergency. Councilmember Dennis Snay seconded the motion. The motion to amend the motion to declare an emergency passed three to zero. In other business, Mayor Lee Wilkinson brought up the Dora issue. Mayor Wilkinson pointed out that the Dora issue must be reviewed at least every five years. The mayor suggested that perhaps city council may want to review the Dora issue sooner or more frequently than that. It was the general consensus that city council would review the Dora issue sometime between January and March 2025. With no other business, the meeting adjourned at 6:54 PM.
Questions on that committee report? Discussion? Okay, thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No reports, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Hayes.
Thank you, Madam President. A meeting was held in city chambers on August 26th. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 24-39 and appointment to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission. Attending were committee members John Hayes, Cheyenne Thacker, and John Kayler. Also attending were councilmembers Herniman, Reesner, Snay, Mayor Lee Wilkinson, and Law Director Zachary Fowler. Councilman Hayes called this meeting to order at 5:38 PM. Hayes asked for details about appointments to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission, and Fowler explained qualifications necessary for an appointment. Mayor Wilkinson went over the appointees' relevant experience and interest in the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission. Hayes motioned to have the law director prepare legislation to accept the mayor's appointment. Councilman Kayler seconded, and the motion carried on a vote of three to zero. And with no other business, the meeting was adjourned at 5:47 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions on that committee report? All right, it takes us to Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Snay.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Herniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Okay. We are now under reports of the officers, His Honor Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. I was approached by a concerned citizen, asked me to give this public service announcement about pest and rodent control. So as a reminder for all the residents out there, here are some things that you can do to keep those pesky little pests out of your yard and your neighborhood. Secure your trash bins, make sure that there's no food sources out. Bring in, like, outdoor pet food, bring it all in at night. Install motion-activated lights, that will help. Seal entry points to block access to getting inside, especially in the garage. And maintain property cleanliness, keeping your grass mowed, weeds trimmed, and debris free outside, to keep all of those hiding spots away from those little critters that could be invading your neighborhood. Okay, I also want to say a few words about the road and bridge levy. First of all, thank you to all the voters who made it possible, and to the city engineer and the engineers department for planning and designing those projects to keep our infrastructure in top shape. The 2024 paving list is complete, so hopefully if you're living on one of those streets that just got newly paved, you're happy with the final result there. The 2025 paving list is ready to go, with nearly 30 streets to begin next spring. And those combined with a section of US 224 and a federal urban paving grant of $330,000, we will be investing about $1.5 million to repave those roads. This is about four times what we would have been able to invest without the rodent and bridge levy. In 2025, the city also plans to begin a pavement maintenance program utilizing the Reclamite Asphalt Rejuvenator. It's a relatively low-cost way of protecting our recently paved streets, so those streets that were repaved in 2023 will be getting that new surface. And we can look for the 2025 street paving list to come out in the paper sometime this week, so be looking for that if you're looking to see if your street is on that paving list. And lastly, September is Child Cancer Awareness Month, and in light of that, I do have a mayoral proclamation to read. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, and approximately 40,000 children are on active treatment at any given time. Whereas 80% of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late and with metastatic disease. Whereas on the average, there has been a 0.6% increase in incidence per year since the mid-1970s, resulting in an overall incidence increase of 24% over the last 40 years. Whereas 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with 1/4 being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. Whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer. And whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Therefore, be resolved that I, Lee W. Wilkinson, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim September 2024 in the City of Tiffin as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I encourage all Americans to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that deeply impacts families in every community across our country on this third day of September in the year of our Lord 2024. And I would like to present this proclamation to the Schroth family in honor of Shelby. They are here with us today.
Yeah. Thank you. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
Director of Law, Zach Fowler.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for kind of point of clarification, the, one of the ordinances for tonight is regarding that, or resolutions for that Joint Justice Center expense that I know I sent to all of you, so it's really probably more for the sake of the public, but there's, as part of that Joint Justice Center, there's an agreement between the city and the county to keep back some funds for capital improvements and repairs. So under that fund, it's basically a 75-25 split, where counties, or the county's paying 75%, the city's paying 25% to that fund each year. According to the county, current balance is a little over $294,000. I don't think we've made any expenditures out of that fund yet, but they've approached to have an approval for two different expenditures, and per that agreement, both council and the county commissioners have to approve any expenditure from this capital improvement fund. The first is to put out an ADA-compliant curb ramp in front of the Joint Justice Center. The map that was sent showed you the location, but it'll be there on Market Street. The other is for a repair to the HVAC system. And this was for not just the Joint Justice Center, but also it serviced the Courthouse The capital improvement fund is only for that allocation to the Joint Justice Center, which is about 66%. So that's just kind of the breakdown of those two expenses. I tried to lay it out on the resolution, but just, at least you're all aware of where that came from. And the only other thing, and just kind of repeat what we talked about at committee of the whole, the amendment that I sent to you on the street cut permit. Again, just two things. We just want to clarify, there's a performance bond, it's not a cash bond, it's just for, insurance bond for performance. And the other was for, that that bond could be held on file at the city for a year, rather than per projects, because we do have some contractors who have multiple projects that year, we just need the one bond on file. And that is all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. That takes us to Written Communications.
Thank you, Madam President. We have mayor's request for legislation number 24-40, 2025 Payment Repair Program.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number 24-40 is assigned to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 24-41 changes to chapters 149 and 143.
Mayor's request for legislation 24-41 is assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-45 to amend the Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the city budget.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-45 is prepared under ordinance 2476, excuse me.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-46 to amend the Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the city administrator budget.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-46 is prepared under ordinance 24-61.
And there is a letter from the Director of Law, Fowler, dated 8/30/24, regarding the amendment to ordinance 2024-67.
Thank you. This will be held on file in the clerk's office.
That concludes the written communications.
So, thank you. We are now under Oral Communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Rob Ledwidge. I'm representing the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission tonight, and I just wanted to say thank you to this council and to the commission that John is in charge of, to see eye to eye with another group in Tiffin, especially with art. It is great, I think it's awesome, that two completely different groups are working together hand in hand to bring these projects to Tiffin. So this year, we're going to see just two projects, but there's many projects on the horizon, so we should see much art throughout the community as the next year, the next few years come along. So I just wanted to come up here and say thank you. I appreciate your thought and your time and your energy putting into this project.
Rob, thank you, and to your group for all of the efforts, and I know that's a lot of time and a lot of thought that's put into that, so we appreciate the partnership.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, great.
Awesome, so we are now under motions. Councilmember Thacker.
I move to table ordinance 24-66. Should I add a reason?
Just let the vote and then, yeah.
Thank you. There is a motion to table ordinance 24-66. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
Yeah, so in terms of this specific legislation, we had kind of agreed as a committee that we would wait to see the fence removed, and the owner of the property would like some more time to be able to get that process complete, so we're going to give him that time and come back to this in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Councilmember Thacker.
I would like to move to amend ordinance 24-67 per the law director's suggested changes. The first one has to do with the performance bond, and the second part of it has to do with holding it on file for a year versus, for instance, so just making it more specific.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to amend ordinance 24-67 per the law director's detailed changes that Councilmember Thacker just outlined. Is there a second? Councilmember Herniman.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Are there any other motions this evening? All right, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 2024-37, excuse me, introduced by John Hayes, a resolution approving mayor's request for appointment of Carla Cash to serve an unexpired term on the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission from the date of this resolution through December 31st, 2025.
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution 24-37. Councilmember Hayes.
I move for passage of resolution 2024-37.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of resolution 24-37, is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Resolution 24-37 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 2024-38, introduced by John Kayler, a resolution requesting distribution of funds from the Tiffin Recreation and Beautification Endowment Fund at the Tiffin Community Foundation, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution 24-38. Councilmember Kayler.
I, Madam President, I move for immediate passage of resolution 2024-38 and to suspend the three reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of resolution 24-38. Is there a second? Councilmember Hayes.
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Law Director, yes.
Yeah, just, again, for everyone's information, the, these were funds that the city had that they put at the Tiffin Community Foundation. It's an endowment, started with $10,000, just over $30,000 that's in there now, can be used for, the beneficiary is the city, so it's used for city, either the parks or other public property. Per the agreement, once council approves this, this will then get sent to the Tiffin Community Foundation. Their donor advisors then have to approve it. Once it's approved, this money, in this case, the $11,000, that'll come to the city, and then you'll then ask me to appropriate that money probably into T-Mac's budget. So that's, will be the general flow, just for everyone's understanding.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero, and now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Resolution 24-38 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 2024-39, introduced by Kevin Reesner, a resolution approving the expenditure of funds from the JJC Capital Improvement and Replacement Fund, held by the Board of County Commissioners of Seneca County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution 24-39. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage, the immediate passage of 24-39, suspending city council's reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of resolution 24-39. Is there a second? Councilmember Snay.
I second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Thacker, thank you.
This is what the law director talked about earlier, just for the public's benefit. It's regarding our agreement for the Joint Justice Center to pay some invoices, basically.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero, and now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Sorry, I misspoke. Sorry, let's do that again. We'll now vote on the emergency. My apologies.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Still yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero, and now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Resolution 24-39 passes with a vote of seven to zero, apologies.
Ordinance number 2024-61, introduced by Scott Herniman, an ordinance naming the Ellis Street Bridge for rich folk.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-61. Councilmember Herniman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 24-61, adding $3,000 for the cost of the plaque for the bridge per the finance director's request.
Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Councilmember Herniman.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask for the passage of ordinance 24-61.
Of amended ordinance 24-61. So there's a motion to pass amended ordinance 24-61. Is there a second? Councilmember Reisner.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Amended ordinance 24-61 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-63, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the Fire Department budget.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-63. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of 24-63.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 24-63. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-63 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-65, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an amended sewer easement and take all actions necessary to acquire easement rights for real property located at 11 Indian Lane.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-65. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of ordinance 24-65.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 24-65. Is there a second? Councilmember Hayes.
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
Just because it's been a while since we've talked about this one, basically, we're just trying to pass a sewer easement, an amended sewer easement, because where the sewer was built and where the easement technically currently is don't match up. So we just want to get this fixed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-65 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Amended ordinance number 2024-67, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance to amend chapter 902 of the codified ordinances.
Thank you. This is the third reading of amended ordinance 24-67. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of the amended ordinance 24-67.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of amended ordinance 24-67. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones.
I'll second it.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Law Director.
Yeah, if I could, just again, the purpose of what we're trying to do on 902, the amendments, is one of the city engineer's main focus is to curb, after these roads are paved, having utilities come in, or construction, whatever needs to be done. To just put a cap on the ability to go in, apply for that permit, and do that cut. So the city engineer works really hard to keep, you know, those paved streets from being cut within those first couple of years. This will put a five-year limit unless there's an emergency on that. So again, as the mayor talked about, road and bridge levy, this is one more effort to make sure those investments are being looked after.
Thank you. Agreed. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Abstain.
Just, Kevin, you do have to just, per your council rules, you do have to say why.
Oh, yeah, because I'm employed by a utility company.
Councilmember Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Ordinance, ordinance 24-67 passes with a vote of six in favor and one abstained.
Ordinance number 2024-68, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance to amend section 905.09 of the codified ordinances.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-68. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of ordinance 24-68.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 24-68. Is there a second? Councilmember Herniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 24-68 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-69, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance to amend chapter 936 of the codified ordinances.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-69. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of ordinance 24-69.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 24-69. Is there a second? Councilmember Kayler.
I second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Law Director.
Just to bring back to your memory what we're doing, this is for the small cell towers. So if a company wanted like a Verizon or AT&amp;T wanted to put, say, like a 5G small tower on like an existing facility in the right of way, like a pole, this just sets some guidelines. They're allowed to do it, but we're also allowed, the city engineer, to pass regulations. So this ordinance will put in effect the ability for the city engineer to put some guidelines in just to essentially keep some harmony for what we do, but also to allow us to potentially say no if it's a location where we need to make use of that space. That's the general gist of all this.
Councilmember Reisner.
Just a quick question for the law director. Telecommunications company like where I'm employed for may work for, may service these towers. So I might want to abstain with this one, too.
You wouldn't need to. This is, you know, this isn't specific to anyone. The only reason I asked you to abstain on the previous one is because your employer reached out on that specific ordinance and asked them questions.
Okay.
Nobody's reached out on this one.
They didn't ask, okay, all right, perfect.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Sneay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
And Herniman.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-69 passes with a vote of seven to zero.